Time that was noticed and posted for our work session, it's Wednesday, April the 10th to 2024. It's 10 o'clock AM. We're in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, Melody Lane, BISI. Pursuant to ARS 38 dash 431 point 028, the public will have physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Roll call District One. Crosby is here. District Two Supervisor English is present. District Three?
Supervisor Jed is here.
We have a complete board. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app, or by phone by calling 602-609-7513, or 888-680-6714. Conference ID is 1896789796 pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. Work sessions are a time for the county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. Introductions for the sake of our record and of your information are always at the beginning of someone speaking so that we know who they are and who they represent. So the item for discussion today is enterprise resource planning software. So Mr. Casey, I'm going to turn it over to you, the Associate County Administrator, for you to tell us what's going on. And I need to say for the record that I was reading from a prior work session this morning, and so the conference ID that I gave is incorrect. So if it needs to be corrected for the record, County Attorney, do I need to do that?
Yep.
Okay. The conference, conference ID is 143871040 pound. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Casey.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe Casey, Associate County Administrator. So over the past year, we've been looking at our enterprise software to see, you know, if we're, if we're going down the right path with our current system, we need to look at different systems. And so during that process, we hired MSS to help us through this process to take a look at all the different softwares that are out there to define our requirements and really go through this process. And David Lyons from MSS is going to go through the slides here to show what process we've gone through and what the results are of that analysis. So.
Thank you, David Lyons. I am with MSS Business Transformation Advisory. We were brought in to provide an objective evaluation of the systems that are in place, the business processes, and then to help with identification of a new vendor or vendors to support the system for the county. I'll go ahead and translate the slides here. I've got just a handful of slides and really they're very high level. I'll take just a few moments to go through each. Feel free to stop me at any time that you have any questions. The scope of the, of the, of the effort was predominantly from a county department standpoint within finance and human resources. From a technology enterprise resource planning module perspective, that covers accounting, finance, procurement, and HR. And then further, you can see the functions, general ledger, accounts receivable, accounts payable. Quite a few of the business functions in those areas were covered. And the systems that currently support them, there's five or more systems currently supporting them. So New World from Tyler, ADP Workforce Now, NeoGov, and then there's various systems supporting the HR performance and training and policy management capability. There's also the TROPS system on the Treasury side that would require integration. And so what we did was we came in and mapped out the business processes that you're currently engaged in, all the capabilities and functions that are currently supported, and, and map those out to give you sort of an as-is, this is where we stand today. We looked at it from a systems perspective, the integration of those systems on the right side of the page. And then we started to look at what were the capabilities that were supported within those business processes, both the ones that you currently leverage today as well as the ones that you perceive needing going forward. And so we created a database of requirements within our decision support system. It's an online tool that we leverage to do this vendor evaluation. And we were able to map out all of the requirements, prioritize those requirements according to what was critical for the county as far as business continuity was concerned, business processes were concerned. And, and, and in doing so, we were able to create a request for proposal to put to a marketplace and the vendors that support these types of activities. We also wanted to critically understand what the pain points were currently. And so whether it was a lack of integration of the systems, manual processes that were placed, those types of things where we would again prioritize those functions and capabilities as far as the, as far as the vendor, vendor requirements, and then the evaluation was concerned. So as far as the challenges that we found, predominantly you've got five systems that are in use that don't seamlessly integrate. So what that means is that we have to pull data from one system and enter it into another system, their manual processes. Turns out there's about 60% of all the processes that we mapped that actually are manual rather than fully integrated within the software. There's a lack of flexibility within the software packages that you have as well to be tailored specifically for local government. So they're very, very good in the private sector. In some cases, they're very good as standalone, but they have a tough time from an integration perspective, giving you the full package, the whole suite of operations and support that you need. And as well, you know, the manual processes certainly drive bottlenecks, process inefficiencies. You're creating solutions on top of solutions to adapt to the fact that, that some of these systems don't work. I'm going to take a quick pause and ask if there's any, any questions.
One of the, one of the things that we looked at was, here we control, we're cheating as possible. Yeah, so one of the things of getting notifications and stuff like that, if people are entering changes in rate of pay, or we had to do a workaround, create an internal audit process. So that's some of the features that we're talking about. But as you mentioned, we're using other systems and there's a lot of time wasted after taking data and manually inputting it into another platform. So that is a workaround because we, before we went through this process, we were trying to make sure, you know, can we work with what we have? And it just became a difficult task because we're using systems that weren't created for government and to process, let's say, government payroll. And we're trying to make it work. And our staff spent many, many hours trying to make these things work. And so led us to the point of, let's evaluate what else is out. But that is, that is, that is a good example. One of the workarounds that we had to do.
One of the topics that we talked about in the last meeting was integration with the state, state responsibility. So how much of what the county does integrating with state systems is going to be covered by, or potentially covered by whatever we have to.
Well, we can, yeah, we can get into the solution that we're recommending, but it's absolutely identified as an issue and a pain point currently. So there's an expectation that we would be able to solve for that. So after we evaluated the, or developed the criteria that we were going to score these systems against, we need to create an evaluation team. And so working with procurement, predominantly upon creating those RFPs and the following procedures, we also identified super users within each of the groups and the categories to be able to, about that. To be able to, to identify and score the evaluation for each of the vendors that we would bring in. So from a, from an IT perspective, you know, Joe and David were brought in to handle the bulk of the technology, architecture, platform, security, those types of issues. Our super users from an HR perspective, Pete and Jennifer were there for payroll for the core HRIS, compensation benefits, grants, time and attendance, those types of things. And then finance, we had Monica, Sasha, and Elaine again, supporting general ledger, fixed assets, accounts payable, et cetera. So all of the areas that were again identified as critical, that we mapped out the business processes for, we identified super users who would be able to guide us as far as creating the criteria and the requirements as well as scoring from an evaluation perspective, the new solutions. We also wanted to make sure that there were representatives from some of the other areas, the courts, the sheriff's office, treasurer's office, and budget. So we identified those folks, allowed them to provide input into the criteria that we were identifying, allowed them to provide input into the demonstration script that we created for the vendors that would come on site and allowed for them to provide feedback after those demonstrations regarding the, regarding the capabilities that they saw that were particular to their areas.
Well, one of the, if I might ask a question, one of the observers that you don't have on here is the assessors. And we literally spent years trying to get the assessors program to work in Arizona because it was so unique. So have you looked at that particular arena?
We have not. So no, we didn't find the assessor system itself. That's a separate type of system than the ERP system. This is more of the core functions of running a business versus the functionality of the assessor.
Well, I noticed you pulled in the treasurer, and, and that's why I was wondering, you know, that, that also is a standalone, isn't it?
It's because it has interfaces with the payroll and the account payable and all that. And so there has to be that integration between the treasurer system, TROPS, and whatever system if we move to another system moving forward.
Thank you.
So as Madam English noted, there's going to be some departments that are so specialized that you're not going to be able to solve everything at once. And the first one that I thought was the elections department. Whatever they're doing is going to be so specialized that most likely it's not going to be covered by a business production. So she just brought up the assessors. And when you start looking at all the stipulations that are in the way the assessor does his work, it really surprised me when I started to learn it from Phil Linecker, who's our assessor, how complex the assessments are that he has to do, whether it's agriculture, this is, you don't have enough agriculture, you don't have enough land, you don't have enough irrigation, just a many different things.
So I want to highlight the process. I know this is really small, so you probably referred to the slide, but this is the evaluation process that we undertook. Again, what we wanted was to provide for objective criteria for scoring these vendors who would respond. We submitted first an RFI, which is a request for information from all the vendors to identify if they actually had within their tools the capability to support the criteria that we had identified and the business processes that we'd identified. We had about 14 people express interest, 14 software companies expressed interest in responding to that, and they did so. Further, we went and submitted an RFP, which is a request for proposal for specifically how they would address those criteria within their solution. So the RFI is generally, do you have the ability to support things like the, the accounts payable requirements that we had? The RFP is specifically, how would you support Cochise County? We had five completed RFPs submitted, which is about roughly what we would have expected from, from, from the, from the software vendors, and they submitted those to Bonfire. We went through and scored those. So the evaluation team I talked about in the previous slide went in and scored each and every one of those against a set of scoring criteria that we set up early. The process was each would individually score each of the vendors, and then we would get together and talk about how those scores, how we felt, you know, as a group, what those scores were. And then the final score that was aligned from the evaluation team was entered into the decision support system.
I have a question.
Yes.
What is Bonfire?
That's your procurement portal for the county. We then created a shortlist of vendors. So once we put those scores for, and I'll talk about how the scoring went, once we put those into the decision support system, we evaluated and two of the vendors rose to the top. And so we shortlisted them and invited them to, to participate in onsite demos. Those onsite demos were a day each, complete. We created the scripted demonstration for them. We told them what we wanted to see and what order we wanted to see. We covered off each and every one of the areas that we had discussed and prioritized. We let them know what was prioritized, that we really wanted to be able to see. And again, the evaluation team, as well as the observers, were able to participate in that demonstration and score those individually as well. Those scores were then also input into the decision support system. Finally, we had references that were provided, and those references were called upon for just the shortlist. So just the two vendors that were invited, the references were called. I think they gave us five each. We called three. And those scores were input as well. So 80% of the valuation criteria came from the first set of, of scoring that we did, the RFI, the RFP, the product functionality, the technical evaluation, the pricing actually that they submitted, and market data. So how well are they performing in the marketplace? Are they viable companies going forward? Is their software actually going to be around in 10 years, those types of things? That was 80%. Once we shortlisted, then we followed up with the demonstration, which was sort of an ease of use and process fit. So did they fit? Were they able to effectively communicate the fit in the demonstration? And how easy was it, at least appearing that the system could be used by the, by users? And then the references were 5% of the total score. So this is kind of how we, we broke down the scoring and I apologize, I keep up on my slides up there. And the finalists were Tyler and Workday. So Tyler Technologies. This is different from your existing Tyler system. Tyler Technologies is a cloud-based, fully-integrated enterprise resource planning tool. They have, over the course of time, acquired multiple additional applications in order to create this product. It's tailored specifically to government, the government space, and we found them to be a great fit. That total 10-year cost you can see there. They leverage their own internal team to do the implementation. One of the challenges with these types of projects is you've got the software vendor providing the software, and then you have to have somebody that actually implements it. In this case, Tyler has an internal team that does that. In the case of Workday, which was our other finalist, they leverage an implementation partner, ABAP, which is a local there in Phoenix, implementation partner who does the actual work for them. You can see there's a pretty big difference in the price between the two as far as the costs are concerned. And it's based on a number of factors that, that we have in the detailed information. The following slide is just a bit from the final scoring of the two vendors. A weighted average is what's highlighted there, in which case you can see Tyler was an 80.33 against Workday is 79.26. It's actually fairly close. One of the things that you'll notice on this page is the best match factor, which is really, we leverage the weighted average because a best match is sort of a weighted average of the weighted average. We prioritized everything within the product functionality side on the RFI, and that gave us a best match. I'm sorry, that gave us a weighted average. We did not prioritize in the other areas that we were considering. And so that best match factor was a little bit skewed. Just, just highlighting that because it shows that Workday actually scored higher in the best match factor, but it was somewhat irrelevant for our, for our purposes. I have obviously details that I can provide if needed, but as I highlighted, all those areas in the slide of where we evaluated the teams, there's detail that's provided as to how they scored in each of those areas and the differences in some of them. But it seems like a lot of detail.
There's pages and pages of detail.
So as you can imagine, we chose Tyler Technologies as far as our recommendation was concerned. We felt that both because of their very specific dedicated capability towards government, the government space, as well as a clear differentiation in pricing, and the fact that they met very, very well. They met both the capabilities, the processes, ease of use. References came back quite, quite well, especially considering the implementation partner being themselves. We had some feedback from Workday that wasn't as, as positive regarding their implementation partner. And so the requirement, the, the recommendation is with Tyler. That's also good because it fits with the objective criteria that we stated in, in our decision support tool. So sometimes those things don't match up, but in this case they did. And so we felt very strongly that that was a correct, correct partner. The last slide is really just a very high-level implementation cost and timeline that they provided to us. It's about a 24-month total installation, go live in roughly 21 months from the start. There are some assessments that need to take place prior around organizational change, data cleansing, and ensuring that the data is prepared to be mapped into the new system. There's a three-month, so from 21-month live to 24 months, there's a production support, implementation support period where they provide, you know, again, just support for the, for the tool. And, and you can see, I mean, there's, there's initiate and plan, assess and define, prepare the solution, and then implement and go live. So.
So on this one, what our intent would be, would be for the first two years is to use local government tribal consistency funds to cover that, that first approximately $3 million for the first two years. And then after that, general fund would pay for the ongoing maintenance of roughly $400,000, depending on the year and increase by year to year, which is slightly higher than what we're paying now. However, it would provide us a lot more functionality and reduce a lot of the manual, manual fixing. So it's about $50,000 difference in the years three through 10 compared to what we're paying now for all the new software.
Oh, I have a, you mentioned cloud-based, and I can't remember which one you said was cloud-based.
They both started cloud-based. That was a requirement.
You mentioned Tyler. You didn't mention the other one. I was wondering that too. They're both cloud-based.
Could you, and all the best I could do is being a fake tech person or not tech. So anyway, just, just to get that out of the way, I'm not necessarily going to know what you're talking about, but I, I would think that cloud-based would be less secure or private. Why is that not the case?
I'm going to let Joe. Yeah, Joe. So, so, yeah, no, cloud, cloud has its own security concerns and benefits, and so does on-premise. So when you're talking about a cloud provider, they have millions or billions of dollars that they spend towards their cybersecurity. And so the connection between us and them, you know, we use encryption, keep it secure, so on and so forth. Versus, you know, if we have it in our server room, which we have now for New World, ADPs in the cloud, so we have a combination of both. And so, yeah, although we do have security, we don't have billions of dollars we're spending towards that security. And so, so when you, when you balance it all, you know, cloud actually has, has more security when it comes down to it.
There's benefits as well around maintaining the software and keeping up to date, current with the releases. So they'll be able to provide those patches immediately, whereas you would have to have them installed in the data center should, should you have challenges with any security patch or even a functionality patch. So.
And then the redundancy side of it as well. If our server room was to fail here, and we only have one server, then it'd be down versus in the cloud, they have multiple large data centers spread throughout the US. That would pick up that one of them both.
Okay. And I wish Ms. Tradewick was here with us, but I'm just going to paraphrase what I think she has said in the past, which was something like, the ARS, that's the state laws, are outdated as to the Board of Supervisors and treasurer interaction. So you get a balance between what is the most expedient for, in this case, the treasurer, versus what Arizona revised statutes might say about how the interaction between the Board of Supervisors and the treasurer's offices. You can address that if you want to, if you have any idea what I'm talking about.
For example, as well. Thank you.
So one of the selling points, I think, for Tyler is that they are a government-focused organization. So they have a team that keeps updated on the, the laws. But what we're looking at is not replacing the treasurer system. So that does not replace, and Kathy was, was involved with these demos, and that was one of her concerns as well was, you know, we're not, we're not going to, Tyler does have a treasurer system. That's not what we're looking at. That's completely separate. We have TROPS, and we want to keep that up and running. That's performed very well for us. So we interact with them, but as far as the laws are concerned, you know, just in general, Tyler has a team that manages and updates the software and rules accordingly.
So I, I think it's important when we're looking at this to kind of understand, I know you brought about like with the assessor's office or the election department. What we're looking at here specifically is common to all government function, and that is HR and planning. So this, we're not going into departments to delve in to the software that they're using. We're focusing on what, throughout all the elections, assessor's office, everyone's employed by the county. So we're trying to look at the systems to help hopefully smoothly our HR, our benefits, and how we pay people and how we track our money. So that, that's different from, like you said, for the assessor's office, how we do the assessments for elections, or if we talk about the legal community, about their database. This is a unifying thing for across the board, and that is for HR only.
So you used that term, or it was used, I don't remember who said it, but enterprise. And so when you mentioned about this conversation of us looking again at another system, it sounds as though the hiring of an outside firm to come in and look at all the aspects from their point of view instead of internal point of view. And I thought we'd done that in the past, but it seems like that, you know, when it, when it's bought, you know, well, the term that I've been told is, you know, garbage in, garbage out. Well, in the past, it's like, oh, finance forgot to tell them that they need it to, you know, and then we're scurrying around trying to go, well, what the hell do we do with that now? You know, so, you know, we, we thought when we went with ADP to get all this stuff done, oh, it'll do everything, you know. I mean, we're not computer people. And, and we found out that we sort of had a bill of goods, you know. And maybe if you'd have gone ahead and done this, it would have worked, or, well, but you didn't tell me that in the beginning, you know. And so I, I guess I come to this with a little skepticism. It sounds too good to be true that you finally found a system that really will integrate all of these processes that are sort of the bedrock of county government.
And, and I think at the outset, that's why we asked for an outside party to come in, is I think before we, we put it on the shoulders internally.
Yeah, you said, tell us what you need, and they put it down, but they forgot some things, you know. Wait a minute, you know.
And it's also the systems that we purchased that later we figured out there, there were some issues that we weren't aware of. And so I think, and we haven't covered this yet, but Joe has done a great job of getting everyone together. And the countless hours of going through just setting the criteria of what we need to happen this time. And so.
That should take longer than anything, you know, to tell me everything you need this to do.
Right. And, and I was always angry because they kept taking the conference room, and I needed that conference room. Days, and I'm like, what are they doing in there? But they spent countless hours trying to create that criteria with the help and guidance from MSS, sorry. And so that was a huge help. But not only that, then taking what we need, the criteria, and trying to see what else is out there. Now, I do want to preface, like, even though Tyler is the best, that system that will meet all our core functions, by no means does that mean that this is going to be a smooth integration, that it would, everything's going to be wonderful, and, you know, after that 24-month and one day, people will be sending thank you cards to us, saying how wonderful everything. No. The integration part, and the reason why it takes 24 months, is going to be tough and changing people.
And changing people's processes of what we've done before, especially manually taking information and inputting it again. It's going to be difficult. It's going to be hard, but still, this is the best process going forward because now we eliminate so many different platforms they were using, and now we have one. And so I think we've taken a lot of time and effort to get to this point compared to, I think what we've done in the past is carried the burden on our shoulders because we tried to save on some costs.
Or we expected a company to come in with information for us.
Yes.
And so that's why I'm extremely grateful that you're not from Tyler, right? Before I make that statement, you know, someone who is not connected,
Right.
you know, can look at everything and say, well, I think you might need to look at this, or you might need to look at that, you know? That alone, you know, makes me much more comfortable with a transition of thinking about, you know, playing fruit basket upset with all of these things, because it's going to be messy.
And I think we made huge leaps in the past, right? Let's, even though they've been tough, we got away from a lot of paper
Right.
processes to get to this point, which has helped. But now we're at our next phase of what do we do now to make it run smooth? And I think we're doing all the right things. You're exactly right. I think adding MSS, a third party, you're not selling us anything, which is key. And then also, I think, moving forward involving them in the implementation, because that's the other part. You can't just buy it and be like, all right, we're good. It is now the twenty-four month process and the dedication to our employees and staff of putting all the input and data in to make sure on day twenty-four or twenty-four months on one day, it's as smooth as possible. So I valuable, and I think getting to this point is a big step.
I would add, just to specifically address your question, not only did we ask, what are you doing today and map the processes and ask them to provide that, we then had over three thousand additional criteria that we said, does this look like something that you either do today or you'd like to be doing tomorrow? Would this make your job easier? And so the criteria that we developed, the requirements that we developed were not just the ones that were provided to us, but they were also from a database of over thirty thousand criteria.
You should be asking.
Exactly.
If you hadn't thought about.
Right. And so we went above and beyond what was provided to make sure that the criteria were as comprehensive as we could possibly get.
Ms. Doug, are you still there?
I'm here.
Did you have any questions? We've been talking around it, and I forgot to ask if you had questions or concerns.
I don't. I have talked to Tyler representatives a few times at conferences because it always looked like something that would be interesting, but I always walked away thinking there's no way our little county could do that. And so having this brought today was kind of exciting for me, and having, you know, a chance to make a decision about it is kind of exciting. And I've also been at presentations at the national conferences where they were sponsoring, and so there was a little information. So I do think that something like this is almost essential. When I would walk away thinking we'll never do that, I thought how maybe for us it was more important because we don't have enough manpower, power to organize everything that we have to organize. All of our, you know, you always talk about not working in silos. This is one way to keep us out of the silos because it's all kind of under one roof. And so I always thought that was important, but it seems too good to be true to me still. So that's where I'm coming from. If you're wondering, so thank you.
Okay, so Tommy, you have any more comments?
Of course, of course. So we talked about a time period somewhere between twenty-one months, twenty-four months before we're ready to do what?
To go live.
Totally live.
Totally live. So one of the things that I'm sure that we all agree on is we've got this balance of the longevity of the system versus the cost. And so once it goes on, we want it to last a long time. So it makes me wonder, what year did we adopt ADP?
As twenty seventeen, could have been early twenty eighteen, but right in that time frame.
So that's not a whole lot of time with that system to reject it and change something else. But then, so that presumably, over the course of time, there will be another divergence of needs by the different users and departments. So that's, it's either got to do everything, like Madam English suggested that ADP was advertised, oh, this is going to do everything. Well, this has really got to do everything if it's going to last more than six or seven years, like ADP is, is that about right? About six or seven years is what we've gotten out of that system. It'd be kind of nice to make it go a lot longer, whatever we got, whatever we're going to buy and spend millions on. I hope that it's going to last longer than that because of the the prevalence of change in the, in the, in the world of technology. And presumably, like I said, each department, every super user is going to, is going to have, so, okay, I wanted to do this, but, you know, that super user over there doesn't necessarily want, they want to do something else, so they're going to continually adopt and, or should adapt to whatever their needs are.
I think the comfort zone that will help you and me and any other supervisors, the fact that they did such an extensive look at not only what are you doing, but what would help you do your job better. And so that's why I say, you know, as long as you can get people to sit down and and really think through, to put the building blocks together is the important part, designing the building, you know? Is the important part. The building will come if you get it designed right. But apparently, we didn't get the ADP designed right.
So that's one of the things I really
We thought it was going to do stuff it wasn't going to do.
Correct. I really appreciate about this process is the actual processes that we got documented out of this. This is what finance department does, this is how they do it, and now we have a document that shows exactly how it is. Same thing with HR and all these other processes. And going down the path, you know, same thing, the plan would be to continue to develop those and document what those are, what those are throughout the county.
And it's not person-dependent, you know? So many times we've depended on a person, you know, to think of all of this, and we're people, you know, I mean, we're going to make mistakes. We're not going to think it through entirely. And so again, I just, I just wanted to thank whoever decided this process. And now, since we have this information, what's the next step, Joe?
So we come from the board and ask for formal approval to expend the money on the first couple of years for the process itself.
And to clarify, so that Peggy, Tom, and I understand, where do you think this money is coming from? So that people won't think that we're going to add it to their tax bill for next year.
Yeah, the three million dollars would be in the local government tribal consistency fund.
So that, this is Sharon Gilman, Deputy County Administrator. So the local government tribal consistency fund money is money that came from the federal government through the various legislation related to the ARBA fund. It has very loose terms. It's for any government purpose. And so I believe our total in that, that is about five million. So this would be three million of that five. We haven't spent any yet of that five million. So we've been waiting for the right government purpose that would be appropriate. That's our recommendation.
Well, I just wanted to get it all out, you know, because if people are listening and department heads in particular, are you going to cut my budget so you can do this? And so it's just always good to know, well, where do you think the money is going to come from? And so I'm sure you've been working on your information to put it on the agenda.
Not yet. That's the next step.
Madam Chair, I just have a question about the numbers. So on the pages nine and 10, you have a nine hundred thousand dollar differential from page twelve.
So Yeah, absolutely. So page ten, that is Tyler's cost alone. Page twelve is the implementation, hiring somebody to come help us to actually implement it itself, because we're not going to do this internally with just county staff. It's supposed to hire somebody to come in and assist us through the process of, you know, continuing to find processes, get everything in place.
And in addition to the Tyler team.
I had one other question that I think you touched on this, Supervisor Crosby, but my experience is that sometimes these packages come with a corporate expectation, if you will, that is on the backside of updates and the pricing that they're going to impose for keeping the system functional, looking ahead in its performance window. Did your references indicate anything about their experience with that using this provider?
Yeah, so we specifically asked that question of, you know, did you get what you expected or were there add-ons? And that was a positive comment we received from them was that, you know, they sold us what we had expected. Good question.
Any other comments, questions? It's nice to have a positive work session.
Yes.
And again, thank you. And we look forward to working with you on implementation, if that's possible. Any other comments? Then we need our next meeting. Next meeting will be Tuesday, April sixteenth, at ten o'clock AM in the board of supervisors meeting room for a work session regarding the county attorney's budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Having said that, this meeting is adjourned.